This hair. Uh, welcome. Hang on. Let me pull up my agenda too. Sorry, I was messing around with Zoom and so getting ready. Okay, welcome to the council meeting for tonight. Sharon, call the role, please.
Councilmember Derwin.
Here.
Councilmember Alps. Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wornikoff.
Here.
Mayor Hughes.
Here.
Sorry, I'm here.
Okay, the first item on our agenda as always is. Oral communications. If any member of the public would like to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand. I see Karen has raised her hand. Go ahead, Karen.
Um, the wildfire committee is the only standing committee that has a town council member who can vote. This power allows the town council to have unprecedented second vote, both within the committee and at the council level. At the last wildfire meeting, the town council began the first steps at orchestrating the ouster of one of our very key programs for wildfire safety evacuation. The explanation given was that the time be spent on other matters such as working with neighbors. But a nationwide program already exists for that called Firewise, which the WPFPD actively supports. Please revoke this unprecedented power by amending the charter so that the council person is not a committee member, but just a liaison.
Thank you, Karen. Um, I believe that's not unprecedented. I think we've done that occasionally with committees in the past. It is uncommon, but. For important committees like this one, it certainly has happened in the past. But thank you for the comment. I see no more hands raised from the public, so. I'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda. The items are voted on with one vote by the body unless a council member asks to pull any particular item. Public comment can be taken on any item on the consent agenda. So if anybody has any. Public comment on an item on tonight's consent agenda items, one through five, please raise your hand now. I see none. Would anybody like to pull any item from tonight's content agenda? Um, I'd like to pull item five. Um, and Cara, I don't know if we need to consider that item before. The rest or not?
No, you can, uh, with the protocols generally to vote on the balance of the consent item consent calendar.
Then I would, uh. Seek a motion for the other items, one through four. Jeff?
I move approval of items one through four.
Second.
Seconded by John Richards. Uh, Sharon, call the role, please.
Councilmember Derwin.
Hi.
Councilmember Alps.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
I.
Vice Mayor Wornikoff.
Yes.
Mayor Hughes.
Hi. Um, so item five, I just wanted to pull to give the town manager an opportunity to give us an update on where we are with. Getting back in person. If there is anything, I know. Maybe that there's not much has changed since, uh, last time, but I wanted to give you a chance to just update the public on where we are.
Thank you. Appreciate that, uh, Mayor Hughes, members of the council. So, um, the primary update that I'd like to give, and then happy to answer any questions if I don't. Cover the topic sufficiently is that we're moving very close to reopening the historic schoolhouse to hybrid meetings. The historic schoolhouses people know is not currently equipped to. To host such meetings, let alone broadcast meetings, um, that many other cities do. Next week, um, we have a week's worth of installation of hardware and then following week testing. And then some initial training of staff and others that will be inviting to participate in how to operate that system. So. Should things be running smoothly? We're hopeful that in April, we'll start being able to introduce back hybrid meetings into this class. The one question that remains outstanding is. How? Right now there's support obviously from the town clerk at council meetings and from planning and building staff at. The ACC and planning commission meetings. Now, the town staff doesn't typically. Offer that kind of supported other meetings, so we, um, will have an ongoing conversation with committee chairs about expectations related to. Who gets the opportunity to, uh, manage those meetings in the way that they would like to see fit? The committee meetings generally operate under the meeting model in lieu of the web webinar model. So, um, there's likely some fewer, um, fewer technical needs associated with the management of the meeting overall. But I'm going to learn more in a couple of weeks myself about how to do all this and we'll be, uh, transmitting that to the committee chairs and others. So we're pretty excited. Uh, to be able to get back in. Um, anything else I can answer, Mr. Mayor?
Um, also, I don't know if there are any changes with the recent changes at the state level around COVID rules and what we're expecting from the governor's office in terms of. Extending the ability to operate remotely. If we heard anything there.
Uh, I'll defer to Cara eventually on this. The short answer is that, um, the recent. Actions by the governor don't, uh, change the ability to continue remote meetings, at least through June. Um, I've also had a conversation with our town lobbyists and they concur with that. Cara, I don't know if you've heard anything differently in the last, uh, week or so.
Yeah, that that's correct. As long as there is a, um. Recommendation that social, some form of social distancing or masks, uh, be worn in a public setting, you can continue to work remotely.
Thank you. Um, with that, I'm prepared to make the findings necessary in the resolution. Um, is there a motion for item five? Actually, before that, I guess I should take public comment. Any public comment on item five? I see no hands. So is there a motion? Move approval moved by John.
Second.
Second by Jeff. Sharon, could call the role, please.
Councilmember Derwin.
Hi.
Councilmember Alps.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wornikoff.
Yes.
Mayor Hughes.
Hi. Okay, and that brings us to our regular agenda and item six, a study session, uh, part two. Regarding the council priorities for the coming fiscal year. Jeremy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, hello, um, joined tonight by Assistant Town Manager Melvin Gaines. I have a very brief PowerPoint for you. You see my screen? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. So on, um. January 26th, the council held the first kickoff meeting for the development of the FY 2223 budget with a workshop with the committees. And details of that workshop are included in your packet. One of the items that we'll be asking you tonight is if there's any, anything specific that you'd like to see incorporated into. The, uh, the project element of the, uh, the priorities. Our assessment is that the majority of the requests from. The committees would fall under their own budgets and may not necessarily fall under the priority. Uh, elements, but, uh, if we got that wrong, uh, we'd love to amend, uh, what we presented to you tonight. The second meeting was the February ninth council study sessions, the first of two. This is the second one tonight to discuss those priorities. Staff presented some ideas based on, um. Um, internal conversations, um, and also, um, obviously on the issues that have been, um, discussed. With the public over the last, uh. Fiscal year, excuse me. We, um. Have five priorities for you. You can see here. And, um, I hope that you like, uh, how we've, um, packaged them for you, um. This year, um, we actually, um, borrowed from some of our neighboring cities on their approach. As you know, Melvin. Played a significant role in Mountain Views Council priority development process and, um. Um, we utilize some of the, some of the things that he was using over there. We think that actually it's in the packet. And we hope you like it. Um, it's actually a very useful document to print and to have available to members of the public as well. Um, easy to read, and I, I think it's, it, it gives a good sense of how the priorities relate to projects. And, um, focuses as appropriate, the council's, uh, attention to the priorities section. Um, as, uh, the council's done in the past. With that, I'm happy to take any, uh, comments and questions. We hope that we captured everything that was, um, uh, relayed to. To staff at the February ninth meeting, um, and that included, I think, some. Some changes related to the nomenclature of, of some of the priorities and the inclusion of some additional. Projects with that, I'll stop sharing my screen. And I would love any feedback, questions or comments. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'll go to council members for questions. If you have any questions. No. Sarah.
I have a question on, um. Specifically on wildfire. I think first of all, thanks for this, um. Updated format. I think it's. Nice and user friendly. So thank you. Um, and I really appreciate all the detail in here. Um, on the first. Bullet, I think it was the first bullet. Hold on, let me, um. In terms of it mentions, uh, it's the third bullet implementation of expanded home hardening and defensible space code updates in conjunction with woodside fire. So. I'm assuming those are the code updates that we're expecting from woodside fire. That.
Yes, in part. So there's two components to this, um, and taking, uh, your last point first. Woodside Fire Protection District, uh, has, um, announced, um. Updates to the fire code. We're in the third year of a three-year cycle, so it would normally happen now. Like, we do anticipate those being somewhat expanded, given, um, the plethora of new information that's being developed by great experts around the country. Um, on these issues. The, um, the other component is that the home hardening code that was, uh, put in place by the town council, uh, late last year, um, is certainly a. Uh, it's a, it's a significant document in that, um, many, not many cities have done something as expansive as, as the town council. But with something that's expansive, we're always learning from it, and we've been having conversations with members of the community about, um. Challenges in implementing the, the code, particularly around decking issues and the like. Um, so the home hardening code, um, may. Uh, change depending on, um, information that we receive. I actually took a meeting today with our building official to talk through. Um, what some of those issues may look like and then timing of, of how they could come forward. And it's fairly iterative too. We try to, um. Bundle all of these major code updates at the, at one time a year. It's a pretty significant undertaking to bring all that forward. Um, and, um, that, that's our hope again this year. Um, in the calendar year of 2022. Is that answered your question, sir?
Yeah, I guess what I was, I was, I wanted to assure that those, because it, at the bottom here, it also mentions adoptions of the fire code updates. So that's. That's kind of, um, I'm just wanting to make sure I'm understanding what, what you guys are listing here. One is adoption of the updates. One is implementation of it. Is that kind of the distinction here?
Uh, you know, in looking at it, I might have just duplicated, um, the effort a little bit so I can clean that up. Um, the point. Trying to make in. Bullet three, thanks for pointing this out, by the way, is that any home hardening updates will be done in conjunction with, uh, with sci-fi protection district. So, um. I think I can clean this up just a tiny bit. Particularly in bullet three and probably. Eliminate that. Uh, element in the parentheses, because as you said below, we, we duplicate that. So I will do that. Thank you for pointing that out, sir.
Yeah, and then I guess no problem. What I, what I actually was really getting at is, um. The, the Woodside Fire Protection District maps. How does that project fit in here? I, I didn't see it. I don't think I saw it explicitly listed and. Um. And if it's not listed, um, I'm just wondering if, if we should add it.
I think it's implicit in bullet three, but, um, to your point, I think making it more explicit is, is necessary. So I will, um. With the council's, uh. Approval at a, uh, a very explicit bullet point here that the fire district is working on those maps. And that, um, they will be reviewed by the town council when they're made available.
Okay.
Sorry about, sorry about leaving that one out. Um, what's the intent? Thanks.
There, Anne. Girl on mute.
I don't have a question, but I do have like some little suggested edits. Is this the time for that?
Why don't we wait and we'll, we'll do those under discussion? Any other questions? Okay, if not, I will take public comment on this item. Uh, is there any public comment? If so, please go ahead and raise your hand. Karen's handed up.
Um, I'm deeply concerned that the $450,000 tree work in the right away is not included in this list. This tree work, um, was analyzed in 2020 and it hasn't, it's not in your budget. Um, it's extremely important for both fire spread and evacuation. Thank you.
Do, um. Is there any other public comment? I see no more hands raised, so I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. So Mary Ann, why don't we start with your list?
Okay, it's not a very big list. So under sustainability, at the very bottom where it says adoption of sustainability committee recommendations. I just thought it might be nice to call out drought because drought is really going to be a big deal. So I thought we could add adoption to that, the end of that. Sentence like. Constructive words. Including preparing for the drought or something like that, just so it's called out. And then under diversity, equity and inclusion, um. First of all, it says, following the creation. There should be of a new committee. Um, I kind of rewrote the very end because it didn't quite say what I wanted it to say. So the way I have rewritten it. Town council continues its commitment to consider diversity, equity and inclusion. When developing ordinances, policy, programs and projects. Is that all right?
That all right with me?
Is it all right?
Anything you direct me to do is all right with me, so, uh.
It's all about you, Jeremy. If it's.
I, I think that's fine if it's.
I, I think it actually is a better, I think it's better text, actually, yes.
I'm seeing.
Mary, Mary, can I ask a favor? Would you, uh, email me that tomorrow?
I will, will it to you. Um, that's, I think there was one little typo over. Under operational and service delivery enhancements. The town council has committed significant resource, significant resources, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
And that is all. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments? No.
I actually, I just wanted to say, I think this is, I, it's a great document. Um. I think this is a really, I agree with you that it's a really nice to be able to sort of put this out there. Publicly wherever people, just as a kind of a statement of priorities and almost values. Thank you.
Is this, this is comment, or this is questions right now, and then we'll go back and do discussion, right?
This is discussion.
Oh, this, oh, okay.
Yeah.
I missed that. We already got to that. Okay. Go ahead.
John.
I'll just say, I, I agree that, uh, I, I like the format. I like the changes. A lot easier to see what's going on and, and. Get a grasp of what we're, what we're looking for here. So, um, thank you very much.
You. Sir.
So, um, I think in my other suggestion is in operational and service delivery enhancements, um, and it has to do with, um. I don't know which number bullet it is, uh, three quarters down, adoption of project management tools. I kind of think of this more as, um, implementation of project management. Principles, like kind of using project management as a discipline. Um, more so than just implementing tools, because I think. I'm fine with project management on Excel or what have you. So I think it's more about. Getting, um, kind of project tracking and that kind of thing. Part of the process more.
Sarah, what was the last word of that? Project.
Maybe somebody has a better, better suggestion for the wording, but, um, what, what I had said is, to me, it's more about implementation of project management principles. And I don't know if somebody has a better way of stating that. I'm, I'm not tied to.
I think that's a, that's a reasonable way, and I, I agree. It's, it's not just about the tools. It's about. Kind of a thought and the culture and the approach to how we work.
Through the, yeah. By the mirror, if I, if I could just clarify, um, and I'm. Apologize that I didn't catch this when I, when I reviewed this as well as the other kind of. Uh. Edits that needs to be made, but that is actually meant to be. Um, and a continuation of the earlier bullet implementing technological and software improvements to increase staff capacity. Productivity and provide enhanced communications and greater transparency. This includes. Like this. Needs to be just, just a bit more, but. So that's an element of the subheader of, uh. I see, yeah. Serve and utilize a town committee and their operations.
Okay.
If I can make a suggestion, uh, through the chair. Will, why don't we add? A, a bullet that. Uh, speaks to the principal portion of this. Is that?
Yeah, because I think that's a much bigger point than just the software and that kind of thing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And then also on, um, supporting, let's see, where is it? Um. There was one about the, oh, explore options to better serve and utilize town committees and their operations. Does, is that the one where, you know, I know there's been, um, some discussion about, um. Kind of, um, make, looking through the, the committee handbook and making some updates and in a broader sense than versus just the narrow sense that we talked about it at the last meeting. Does that relate to that?
I, I, I think so. I think it relates, Sarah, to the conversation that we've had, um. Off and on about the, kind of the role of council liaisons and.
Right.
I think committee agendas and tracking work items that committees need to be working on and so on, and allowing them to. You know, come up with their own ideas, but only as long as they're getting kind of the core work that needs to be done, taken care of. So I, I think it's probably around that stuff.
Mm-hmm. So I don't know. I think we could, there, if, if you're going to be tweaking the wording, I think we could refine that. I don't know what the right answer is off the, off the cuff right now, but I think. Um, I agree with, uh, Craig's. Description of it, and I think this could be tweaked to be, uh, more consistent with that.
Would through the chair would, um. Would, uh, uh, just a level of specificity be more helpful here with some examples in the, in the way that we'll edit the, the, um. The bullets below, um, sort of, sort of.
Well, I don't know if, if, I mean, it more or less what we're talking about is kind of reviewing the overall handbook and, and, uh. You know, just making updates as we see fit based on kind of. You know, uh, just going through it and seeing what needs to be updated.
Yeah, I, I think it may be a little broader than that. It's, it's kind of like your last point, Sarah, that it's not just the tool. So it's, it's not just the handbook. I think it's also thinking about, you know, how the processes work. So I think it is a little more broad, which I think the current bullet point captures. So I, I, I think it includes what you're saying, but it's, it's, it's more than just updates to the handbook. It's, it's kind of thinking about how the process works as well.
Okay. I'm not, I just wanted to make sure that this was addressing, the way this was worded to me, I wasn't certain that that's what we were talking about there, so.
If this is helpful, as, as the conversation has gone on to the last minute or two, thinking about this. This, this is the kind of bullet point that can. Be read by five reasonable people and have five very different conclusions. And.
Right.
I think. Bringing, I, I think some further conversation, if the, if the council's comfortable with that, on. What? Uh, uh, to get this maybe a little more specific, while still capturing. You know, the notion that there may be a lot, uh, uh, different pieces to it. Um, I can think about it and maybe offer something as you guys continue to talk, but I, I think that Sarah's onto something here that, that could be useful. We want anybody to read this and get a. Uh, the wrong impression about what the conversation that I, I think that the council wants to have.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, Jeremy, let me ask a process question. Um, the, the goal is to more or less finalize this tonight. Um, so that you can then take it into the budget process. Is that correct? This is the last study session we're having on this. So what level of finality do we need to get to tonight in terms of? If we were to want to modify this bullet point, can we kind of leave this one bullet point open till next time, or, or do we want to, um? Try and nail it down now.
Till the next council meeting?
Well, and I'm asking you.
Yeah. Oh, no, I mean, certainly I could, we could take it to the next council meeting. That won't stop the budget development process. There's the opportunity to, to, to think about this a little further and, and bring it back as a, as an item on the 23rd.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that we could potentially, assuming that there's a motion tonight, we could approve this, you know, with one or two edits to come back on a consent agenda item or something for those. Because I think we, I, I think you get the sense of what we, what we want to change and maybe we could. I don't know, assign one council member to review the final draft and then put it on the, before it goes on the agenda for. Our next meeting for final. Final ratification or something.
I don't know. I make a suggestion to the chair, um, the.
Or to staff.
Oh, well, I, I mean, I, I think that this product, uh, would. It's a product of the council that it requires the council to have its full, um, endorsement. Um. The mayor, the vice mayor meet regularly, um, on Monday mornings, and I think that that can be included as part of that and bring back perhaps a recommendation from the two of you, just as part of the next packet. That works. Okay, cool.
Okay, any other thoughts, comments, edits, suggestions? Um, if not, um, I would look for a motion to. Uh, approve this or to, to, to approve it pending some minor edits come back for our next meeting, maybe.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry. Can I just ask one quick question too? I know, you know, uh, what, uh, the wildfire preparedness committee is interested in. Um, potentially having a speaker or two, and they, they didn't, they never submitted budget numbers. I'm assuming. They can still do that, even though they don't have a line item in this. Packet here.
Uh, yeah, just as a, a process through the chair process, uh, answer the, um, committees. There, there will be an opportunity to submit that, uh, very more formally, a little bit later this year.
Okay.
Normal process. So, yeah, absolutely.
Great. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Happy to move that we approve this pending. What was it pending?
Some minor edits that will come back for. Next consent agenda.
Minor edits that will come back for next consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, moved by Mary Ann, seconded by John. Sharon, could you call the role, please?
Councilmember Derwin.
Hi.
Councilmember Alps.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wornikoff.
Yes.
Mayor Hughes.
Hi. Okay, and that brings us to item seven, a report by planning, the building director, um. And a workload update. Laura, are you presenting this item?
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. Um, I'm Laura Russell, Planning and Building Director. Let me share my screen. Okay, does that look good to everyone?
Yep.
So we're talking about, um, an update on planning and building department staffing. So as a reminder, um, the council. Last to discuss the staffing in, um, the planning and building department in May of 2021. And at that time, there were a series of recommendations to the council that the, um, council supported. And so we have changed the staffing pattern in the department. And added additional resources since that last report. So our full-time staff has gone from four to five. We added a senior planner. And then our part-time contract staff has gone from five to seven. Including planning code enforcement and building official services. We talked about at that time, having another update to council in early 2022. So that's what we're doing here this evening. So we have a presentation on the workload, the budget, um, and the plans to cover. A scheduled leave of one of our key staff members. So it's structured in terms of proposals for this fiscal year as well as for next fiscal year. So first, just a little bit about what's been happening since we added the additional resources that the council approved. We had a successful senior planner recruitment, um, which I can tell you is no small feat, um, in this world to find a senior planner. And she has ended up spending a hundred percent of her time on the housing element update. We expected it to be right around 85%. So she'd be able to do some. We expected it to be right around eighty-five percent, so she'd be able to do some other tasks, but that hasn't turned out to be the case. Um, we also added additional contract planner services, and we've continued to see a really high demand for customer service. And by this, I mean just the routine help that we give people before they make a formal application. So this is emails, phone calls, Zoom meetings, um what the counter service um before the pandemic. So all of that kind of routine customer service. The requests have been really high. So we have already expended the budget funds um that we had for contract planner services um midway through the year. And so this was about how it was balancing the different priorities of the staff and who was working on what. And the contract planners have been quite effective. We've trained in a new contract planner, and that's been working well for us. So we want to continue to do that. So we have a a budget request coming up related to that. We also added code compliance services, sometimes called code enforcement. We have a really experienced code enforcement officer that's been working with us. And so that's really helping us to track all of the cases, close more of the cases and keep up all of our records. So now we have more of a code compliance program instead of kind of a hit and miss um approach that we had in the past. Our resources were limited such that we only could really focus on the most egregious or life safety code complaints in the past, and now we're able to focus on a much larger range. Um, we maintain a really what I would call a soft touch for code compliance. It's very much focused on communication outreach, trying to get voluntary compliance. We haven't had to go to anything serious like notices of violation in only very um rare cases. So that's been a successful um approach for us so far. We also added building official services. So um we're working now with a very experienced building official that works with us just a few hours a week, but has made a really big difference. In terms of implementation of the home hardening ordinance as well as routine management of um building division functions. And he's very helpful for problem solving um and code interpretations. So these have been really effective changes that we've made to the department staffing. So in the big picture, um, we always wanna look, you know, and think about how our work program is evolving. Um, certainly, a lot of things have changed. In the community in in recent years. And some of the things that we're working on now have a much higher level of complexity. Um, and really end up with much more customer service needs and many more inquiries from residents. So uh we talked about this a couple of times tonight. We're talking about it all the time. We're working on our housing element and safety element updates, um which are very time consuming and complex. And have really high levels of participation from the community. We're working in an environment of very complex state laws. Um, so these are all the conversations we've been having around ADUs, SB nine, housing element laws. Um, this series of laws is really certainly unprecedented in my career, and so it takes a small town like this that we used to just operate. Um, this from a friendly, easy point of view into being now we're really in a position of having to do legal compliance all the time. And really kind of starting with the town attorney as a starting point for everything that we do. So it's really a shift um in philosophy. So we're trying to keep all of the friendly approach. But make sure that we're really being compliant with state laws um and bring those things forward to council so that people understand them. As you know, we're also processing really significant development applications that require a lot of time. This includes planning staff, town attorney and town manager time on those larger projects. We have really high levels of community engagement and lots of communications that are going out. We're getting um lots of. Inquiries and questions about the initiatives and projects that we're working on. And our public records act requests kind of go up and down depending on on what phase different projects are in. But we assume that those public records acts requests will kind of spike up again as some of these projects start to come forward. And the public is looking for additional information on those projects. We're also seeing a continuation of what I talked to you about last year, and that's related to applicants requesting a very high level of service. And we can only link that to the pandemic. Um, we're not sure that that's the case, but we have certainly experienced people. Feeling um dissatisfied with the world, um with politics, with the pandemic. And we're really feeling the effects of that. So they're really looking for a lot of service from us. And we really value that opportunity to provide a lot of service to the public, but the result is that um it outstrips the supply that we have oftentimes. So now we're gonna turn to a few of the quantitative measures. Um, there's more detailed information in the staff report, but I just wanted to hit on a couple of highlights. There's some uh elements of our work that we can quantify, and we've been trying to do that more over the last year so that we can really understand trends. This is new for the town. Um, to my knowledge, it hasn't really been done in this way in the past. So we're trying to update these same kinds of tables and carry them forward so that we can see the trends. We can share them with the council and with the public. So last year, we talked a lot about building permit applications. So this is a way to measure kind of the fundamental. Um, quantity of permits that are going through the building division on a quarterly basis. Um, and we broke it out this way so that we could kind of track and sometimes changes with the seasons, depending on um how busy um building divisions are. So we started with uh fiscal year eighteen nineteen data cuz we were trying to compare to pre-pandemic numbers. And you'll recall that we um. Last year, when we talked about this, we really highlighted the high number of permits that we were processing even in pandemic conditions. And we estimated that the twenty twenty one building permit total would be around four hundred and forty-five or four forty-eight is what we estimated. And it didn't come in very close to that. So by the end of last fiscal year, we processed four hundred and forty-two building permits. Um, so that's a twenty-two percent increase over a pre-pandemic um kind of. Environment workload and staffing pattern. The numbers for this year um continue to be high, not quite as high as what we saw last year. So the numbers that I'm gonna present for all of this are all for one half of the year, so six month numbers. So you can compare throughout this presentation. For six months. So I didn't bring it all the way up to March cuz logically to me it made good sense to keep it within quarters and half of a year cuz that analysis, I think, is more intuitive. And then here's the main types of planning applications to also give you a sense of the volume of the work that we're um dealing with there. So this is fiscal year nineteen twenty that you saw last time. Um, you saw partial data for twenty twenty one. And then now we have half of the year for this fiscal year that we're in now. We're seeing an increase um that's really big in pre-applications. This is because we're seeing a lot of. Um, significant remodels um that we're now putting through a pre-application process. So this is partially to increase cost recovery um per the council's previous direction to increase cost recovery in the planning department. And also to increase the information that applicants have upfront so that they can be more successful in the process. So this number is going up as we're trying to assist people um with their applications. So we're on track to um have about as many as we did last year. Um, under architectural review and site development, these are starred because most new houses or major projects would be both architectural review and site development. And they're coupled together in our permit tracking system. So we have half of the year so far for architectural review. We have eleven, but many of those are also gonna include site development permits. We're processing two things at once. So that number actually is more work even than what it looks like, and and we're on track for a record year there. Some of these smaller ones, you just never know when they're gonna come up. Sometimes they come up and sometimes they don't. Um, so they're not quite as important, but it is useful to look at the total number um of applications. So halfway through the year, we're at twenty-seven. Um, so on track for a high number and well um above pre-pandemic numbers. Um, very obviously, we're also working on the housing element and the safety element. Um, and then the significant projects that I wanted to highlight are the Stanford Faculty Housing Project. We're working on a conditional use permit amendment for Alpine Hills to increase um their membership. And then we are also working with Alpine Inn um to make renovations to their main building um and update them to a modern safety standard and um health department standard. So next, I wanted to turn to increased revenue. Um, this is a new part of the report that I wanted to bring to the council so that you could. Be familiar with these numbers now and for the interim proposals, and then also to kind of set the stage as we're going into a new budget year. So the building division revenue is mostly within three key categories. And these are shown here also in the staff report. It's building permits, plan check and inspections. So the first category, building permits, um you can see first the revenue that we've taken in for six months, the fiscal year budget. And the percentage of the budget that we're at right now. So for building permits, we're at eighty-five percent. Um, of the year's budget when normally, right, we'd expect to be about fifty percent. So we're well above that. When we were doing the budgeting for last year, we were quite conservative because there were some so many unknowns. It was kind of a different world we were all living in a year ago when we were working on the budget. So it really, we were conservative on purpose. Um, but we do think with these kind of revenue numbers and the workload number staying high. That these trends are gonna continue for us um in the foreseeable future. So these building permit numbers in the first row is primarily performed by staff. So this is the work that kind of funnels in from the work that the technicians do to take in applications, move them around. Then the next category is plan check. This work is performed. Primarily by consultants, our plan check consultant firm, Cutzman, but there's also a staff component that also goes towards staffing um. Salaries to perform this work. And then the same thing with inspections. This is work is performed primarily by our contract building inspector. But there's also a portion that funds staff salaries. So we don't have exact expense numbers because invoices always lag behind and it always takes some time to process them. So I wanted to be transparent. It's not that our income in plan check and inspections. Is gonna, there's gonna be a proportional increase um in our expenses to consultants as well. But the first row of the building permits um is really work that's performed primarily by staff. And then in the planning division, um, these are just some key categories to kind of illustrate some of the uh terminology that we've been talking about. So site development permits are at seventy percent. Of the budget. That's usually a pretty big number for us. Architectural review is a pretty big number. We're at sixty-six percent. And then the last column is town staff time that's charged to deposits. So as you know, we have a fee plus deposit system. So when planners are actually working on projects. This is the money that gets charged um to those deposits and comes back into the town as general fund revenue. Um, and goes back to fund salaries and the like. So this particular case, this is gonna be including almost exclusively our assistant planners time. A little bit of one of our technicians' time and a little bit of my time when I'm working directly on projects. I would guess this is an accurate number according to the budget, but there are some things that lag behind. So I would guess this number is just a little bit higher. But even based on that conservative number, we're at fifty-three percent um of the amount budgeted for the year in that large category. So this is total department revenue for planning and for building. So you can see um the revenue for the first half of the year in the fiscal year budget. So in the planning division, we've taken in almost a year's worth of revenue in six months. Um, and then in the, I I might have just reversed that building division, a year's worth of revenue. And then in the planning division, we're also ahead of the fifty percent mark that we'd expect to be mid-year. So I'll turn now to our interim approach, what we proposed for this fiscal year. So there's a series of adjustments that we're trying to make to kind of cover everything that we've got going on, and especially considering the planned leave of one of our key staff members. So we're proposing to increase director time, my time on the safety element and the housing element. And then our consultant is urban planning partners for both of those initiatives. We would increase their time on both things. The council has already considered an increase in the safety element, and then we'll be bringing back some additional information on the housing elements. We'll we'll bring that to you separately. We're um proposing to bring in an acting principal planner. So this is a highly qualified um professional planner. And they would backfill some of the work that I would typically do so that I can focus on housing element and safety element. Much of their time would be reimbursable in the system that we're proposing. So applicants would be paying for the acting principal planner's time to supervise the planners that are reviewing their projects. But some of that would not be um reimbursable, so we're estimating that at about ten thousand dollars for the remainder of this fiscal year. Next, we plan to increase the assistant planner. This is our full-time assistant planner. Uh, we want to have them spend more time in the housing element and the safety element. And then we have two consultant planners that are doing the customer service that I talked about earlier. So we've um spent the money already there. And the needs are really high. So we're recommending a fifty thousand dollar augmentation to that budget for this fiscal year. And then we also would like to have a consultant planner budget for some other initiatives. So these are some of the items that um. A lot of people wonder, well, why can't we just get a few small things done? So these are those few small things that we would have a consultant planner to be able to work on. Um, so an example of this would be we might need to do a a quick code amendment with our housing element to bring ourselves up to some state law. So this planner would work with Cara on that. Um, there are some small things that have been requested from committees that we'd like to bring through the process that we haven't had the resources to do. So I have a consultant planner that um is experienced with us now, and I think qualified to take on some of these initiatives without a tremendous amount of my oversight. Um, and so this budget is for that so that we can move a few things forward um still this fiscal year. And then in terms of an upcoming budget request. Um, we propose that the town hire a new permanent development review technician. So we would have a total of three. We have a senior development review technician, and then we would have two technicians that would be level one or two. And you might recall that we've rewritten all of those job descriptions. You fairly recently um approved new job descriptions for all of those positions. We do think that it's supported by the workload analysis and the budget information that we're supplying. The goal would be to have them do both technical and administrative work, um customer service. We have some needs for record keeping that we put aside when the pandemic started, and we recognize that if we don't get going on some of that record keeping, it's gonna be a big mountain. Um, to deal with later. So we want to make some progress on that. And we also want to free up some time for our senior technician and our planners to do higher level work. When the pandemic started, we actually had to shift some technical and administrative duties onto the planners. Both full-time and consultant, and I would like to ship those back to a technician position so that the planners can focus on their higher level work. And I also want the opportunity for the senior technician to work with me on some process improvements. Um, that we've been talking about that we haven't had the time or resources to work on. So the fiscal impact of the new technician, um what we propose to do is to do the recruitment this fiscal year. And then bring the formal budget requests with the fiscal year budget for next year. Um, but this would give us a head start on the recruitment. So this is what we're asking for is kind of. Like the preliminary approval, like the assumption that we're gonna include this in the budget year so that we can go out, find someone. Um, and then line things up so they could actually start as early as possible in July. You might recall that we did this for the senior planner last year, and it worked really well for us. We didn't have to wait until the fall. Um, to have someone started after the fiscal year um began and the budget was in effect. So this type of position, we estimate at seventy to eighty thousand dollars plus benefits. It might be someone that is a professional technician that wants to switch to a new place. It could be a recent college graduate that's getting started. Um, it could be kind of those kinds of folks that would bring some fresh energy. Um, and we could train up. In planning and building, and also it could be in engineering as well. And then in terms of the interim measures that we're proposing for this fiscal year. Um, uh, this is just the summary from the previous slides, ten thousand acting principal planner, fifty thousand for consultant planners, customer service, twenty thousand consultant planners, special projects, eighty thousand total. We will have salary savings from the uh senior planner of approximately forty thousand dollars this fiscal year. We want to be careful as we're talking about the safety element, the housing element, and these um. Proposals that we don't double count, if you know what I mean, the salary savings from the senior planner. So I'm leaving that salary savings in this bucket. But when we come back to council, um, I'll try to bring a summary of all of the different expenditures and the different categories and initiatives. So that you can get a full uh picture of it when we talk about the housing element. We also do think that the revenue analysis indicates that there's available funds um for this money at this time. So in terms of next steps and direction, staff is seeking direction on two things. So first is that interim plan for this fiscal year request. And if you. And if you support that request, we would bring it back as a formal budget amendment. But we would um go forward with implementing it right now. And then you would see the formal budget um request in a package of a budget request that are coming up. And then we would like your consideration of the recruitment for the new technician. Um, so that they can start next fiscal year. And then we imagine that we should continue these discussions. So we'll think we'll need a future council study section or um. You know, we might bring things back to you directly depending on the conditions that we're under with a specific proposal. So we want to make sure we're always reviewing the department activity and staffing. Um, because things really are changing very rapidly, and we do anticipate that there'll be additional needs that come out of the housing element update process. So those are the things. Um, we'd like your feedback and direction on this evening. So I'm happy to um try to answer any questions and look forward to your comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just to follow up with Laura's excellent presentation. Um, I I hope you're as impressed as I am with the the work that's coming out of the planning and building department. Um, and you know. It's part of a larger trend that we've been undertaking for a few years now where department heads. Um, are much more involved in the development of their own budgets than previously had been the case here. Uh, in Portola Valley, um, and um Laura's been leading those efforts. You'll see a similar presentation from the public works director uh next, i- either at March twenty-third or the April thirteenth meeting. Um, uh, related to similar items. Um, and. Just to emphasize uh one point that uh Laura made. Um, we will bring forward a, a pretty large um budget amendment package. In early April, that reflects a number of items that the council has. Um, requested um changes to or have been. Um, items that we've been forced to the staff level to to make some changes. Um, so that's coming uh to you. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, we'll start off with questions. Do you have any questions for Laura or Jeremy? I I do, um. I- is is this enough, Laura? Um, you, I I see the work that you've done and and greatly appreciate it. Um, and. You know, you've you've got a lot of shuffling going on here, and I'm trying in my head to kind of. Picture where all the people are moving to and how it's all gonna shape up. But looking at your analysis of of revenue, you know, we we're. We're essentially doing twice as much work uh as we expected to in the budget. Um, and it sort of feels like you're increasing. The number of people on it by fifty-ish percent. And so I just, I I. I I I know that changing too much too quickly can be as much of a problem as uh, you know, having new people settle in and stuff, but if. I- is is one additional um. Person enough to ha- you know, cover everything that you need or. A- and maybe your last slide kind of covered this. You kind of want to try that out and then see where it is and then come back and. And adjust again. I I I'm thinking in particular, you know, our our budget year next, there's in. July, starting July, um, the second half of that year is going to be operating under our new housing element where. Theoretically, we're going to be setting our planning rules to. Uh, encourage twice, roughly two and a half times the pace of housing development that we're currently seeing. So where we we're already sort of at two X what we'd expect, we're going to be doing another kind of two X-ish. Maybe not on day one of twenty twenty-three, but um. It's going to be ramping up continuously. So is that, is that what that last slide was saying is? You recognize that and you're, you're gonna just kind of add one, see how it goes, add another, see how it goes, add another and and get to where we need to be.
Yes, I think this is an ongoing conversation between the department and the council, um, and I will be monitoring it constantly. Um, what I know right now for sure is that we need a technician to start as soon as possible in July. Um, so that's what I'm sure about. And then I'll continue to analyze where things are um and work with Jeremy on the overall budget. Um, certainly more resources are going to be needed. It's just a matter of figuring out what. Resources and in what form and how much of that is going to get cost recovery. Because that's a um challenging part of the analysis for me. I have to spend a lot of time thinking about what's going to be reimbursable and what's going to be a general fund expense. So uh more work is gonna just be ongoing in that category. So these are what I would consider to be the immediate needs of the department. And then we'll monitor, we'll report back, um, and then we'll assess the next that it needs.
If I can add to that. Um, you know, the planning and buildings is an interesting de- uh department because. It has these moving parts that they're necessary to some extent, and having worked in in multiple departments or had a responsibility to do a lot of the work that Laura is doing. I did a similar analysis at the county of San Mateo about fifteen years ago. And what, you know, what we find is that there's short-term work that we're doing, there's longer term work that we're doing, and that requires different kinds of staffing at different times. So what Laura's developed um over the last few years, I think is is a fairly robust. Uh, system that has a foundational basis with the permit staff. And then where we need them bringing in consultants as necessary and available. Um, certainly, I think it's worth mentioning that right now, uh, you know, finding quality people i- is it's just a challenge. Um. There's just a a dearth of people who are, the numbers aren't there. Um, so. You know, as as Laura was describing, um, seeing as things go, because some of these things can be um, uh, a consultant-based solution. What we always are thinking about too is is the cultural aspects of what that means. Um, one of the benefits that we've had in our community is, uh, you know, for a long time, lo- long-term. Um, folks who have stayed with the town, you know, Carol and and Shy and Howard. And there's an institutional knowledge that comes along with that that's very hard to train up on. So bringing in a consultant planner and asking them to do certain kinds of tasks is really just not. The way to go. Um, but there's other things that are very well suited. So that flexibility and and nimbleness is uh. Something that I think Laura is speaking to uh tonight, and I just want to point that out.
Yeah, and thanks, Lori. You know, the the data that you have behind this um is is, I think, very helpful and continuing to track that I think should should help keep us on track. Um, one other question I had, and it may. Well, it may maybe an issue for, you know, the first new person you bring in, um, especially as we start reopening. Wh- wh- where are they gonna sit?
Um, for now, we're fine. We have um workspaces in my department that are still nicer than where most. Planners and technicians sit in San Mateo County. So it's not as nice as Carol's cube, but it's still really nice. So for now, we've got room and then we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Okay.
Right to that point, um.
Learned some things in the last couple of years about being able to work remotely, part-time and that kind of stuff, so.
Absolutely. We also have some, um, uh, Howard's been working on this a bit, you know, anticipating that we may need to add additional staff, but I. Outside of of planning as well. Um, the initial plans for the town. A hall called for some cubes in the space near my office. Um, so there's some. I- it's wired to do that. Um, so we have some flexibility there as well. And uh the beauty of consultants and and flexible work schedules is you start to move to a shared work space environment. Um, so I I'm sure we'll see more of that.
Okay, thanks. Um, those were all the questions I had. Anyone else? No? Okay, I will go to public comment then. Uh, is there any public comment on this item? I see Karen's hand up. Go ahead, Karen.
Yeah, me again and again on wildfire. The town again decides to slow down progress on wildfire preparedness. The ACC can work on the design guidelines immediately. And requires little or no time staff support. Or use of a consultant planner that you've requested the budget for. Design guidelines were to be completed in twenty twenty or early twenty twenty-one and have been delayed again till the next fiscal year. Please do not do that again.
Thank you. Um, I see David Cardinal's hand up. Go ahead, David.
Thanks, um, two quick comments. Uh, well, maybe three. First, I I thought Laura's presentation was great. And second, I do think that. Like, geez, that we are already doing. The more we can do to make the uh developers and applicants self-fund the the better. And third, I do think there's a um. Unknowing or unwillingness to believe that. What people ask for from the town is not free. So we get a lot of requests like, oh, it's, you know, Uncle Sam or something like, can't you do this or can't you do that? Can't you go around and count the fire hydrants or whatever it is? And I don't know how we do this, but making people understand that. These are. People who work for us roughly. And who we pay, and these things aren't just coming out of a sandbag somewhere. Um, I think might be helpful, or if they want them, we have a boutique government, which is great. Uh, we should be willing to pay for it. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Any other public comment? Hmm, I don't see any more hands up, so I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Anybody want to go first? Anything to say? John, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just. Way in, let's, I'm always impressed that you're. Laura, your ability to parse out this complicated, moving target, there's so many different parts and uh. And it's, and actually make a reasonable estimate of what we're, what we need to do. So thank you so much for that. I I'm. Don't really have any questions. I think your proposal makes perfect sense, and uh, I'd say we go for it.
Sarah.
Um, thank you also uh for the good detailed background and, you know, I would just pretty much echo uh Craig's. Questions, which you've you've answered, but really, you know, I I I think. All of us really want to support the staff. Um, I know you guys have been working really hard and it's been drinking from a fire hose lately. And I just want to make sure that you have the resources you need and um, you know, you're so thorough. I trust your judgment about how to go about that. I would. You know, err on the side of, you know, really making sure, because I think it's just just going to get more difficult. Um, you know, versus less difficult. And I think, um, you know, I would just encourage you to. To kind of lean into thinking about the broader vision of what your department's going to need um as we look ahead. Um, but I'm certainly supportive of of what you've presented here. So thank you.
Jeff.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, uh, John and Mary Ann will probably attest to this too, having gone through a housing element eight years ago and then doing it again now. Um, the the uh exponential growth of of mandates, regulation. And just legalese that we have to jump through to get something like this done. I mean, I I, you know, a few months ago, we were looking at a plan for for Laura's plan for for all the consultants she was working with, and I said, I told Jeremy it was a magic act. Um, the number of sort of capabilities that we're bringing in and putting down as we need them, because. Not only is the work gotten complicated and high volume, it's actually, it changes every few months. Um, you know, we're, we're everything that Laura and Adrian or most of it Laura and Adrian are doing right now. Is going to go away in a year, we hope. Um, the the, when the housing element is done. Um, you know, it's just, it's, it's, you know. It's become a really, I mean, it's become a really high-level management task, along with all the sort of details you get into doing it. So. I, I've been impressed in the last two years or more really of what that what Lauren and staff have done. Um, I think that this, I mean, this presentation and this plan looked great to me. As long, you know, like Craig said, as long as you're getting what you need, as long as we we think this is enough for the for the time being. And if not, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to adjust for that as well. So. Uh, well done. I support this plan going forward and uh just, you know, let us know what else we can do.
Mary Ann.
Yes, yes, yes. I have nothing more to add. Um, incredible report as usual, Laura. I don't know how the planning department does what they do. It in no way resembles the planning department. That existed when I came on board in two thousand five, six. And we don't have a lot more people. So, yes, yes, yes. I, I do, I am in approval of everything you want.
Um, yeah, I I would echo what everybody else said, Laura. I think, um, you know, since you've been on board, the the this. This report and the the process of thinking about how to manage our planning department and its evolution, um. You can see the steps that it's taken. Um, and. Um, you know, I'm very confident that you have a a good grasp on what we need and where we're going and and. Uh, we'll be able to take the steps to get there and and. Um, you know, the the statistical analysis that you're looking at here, I think, is exactly. That platform that we need as we're heading into this new housing element cycle to really. You know, know whether or not we're doing what we need to be doing and keeping up with things and. Where there might be problems and to get ahead of it and and, you know, plan based on that. So I'm I'm. Really happy to see all this stuff and and see the evolution of it as it as it continues to iterate. Um, so very supportive of this. Um, and. Looking forward to the next couple of steps too. It's going to continue getting more and more exciting.
On behalf of the staff, Mr. Mayor, I I'd like to thank the collective council for their. For their leadership and their advice and their and their thoughts and and their support. Um, it, a- as a member of staff, it is not an easy. Undertaking to come forward and ask for help. Uh, and also ask for the resource for the help. And we're very appreciative that this council's created an environment where these conversations can be fruitful and and. Is it supported? Sorry, my wife is returning home apparently, so the dogs are excited. Um, so thank you. I'll shut up now.
Okay, thank you. Um, do.
Jeremy's dog is asking for help, so.
Um, let's see, I I suppose we need to accept this report and approve. I guess pre- preliminarily approve the budget resources, but the the actual budget item or budget update will come back, Jeremy.
Yes, uh, a motion tonight for that would be helpful, and we'll bring back the formal budget uh changes at a at a meeting in the near future.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Okay.
Sarah moves. Second by Jeff. Sharon, call the role, please.
Councilmember Derwin.
Hi.
Councilmember Alfs.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warnock.
Yes.
Mayor Hughes.
Hi. Thank you very much, Laura. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. I I appreciate all of the comments. Um, it means a lot. Um, so we'll, we'll continue the conversation. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay, that brings us to committee liaison and regional agency reports. Marian, do you want to start since you weren't here last time?
Probably have a double, double height stack this week.
Well, I'm, I've been, someone texted me and said, please keep it short. So I'm not going to go through all the ones that I attended. Before the last meeting, but I will go through the ones that I've attended since the last meeting. Uh, race and equity was last night. And there uh was a dis- initial discussion. About the housing element committee. I can't remember how. Andrew Pierce described it. It was something about when you go to the opera for those operas that go for like, I don't know, eight hours. Um. Anyway, they're all, the committee's very interested in that process, the housing element process. And he asked them, where would you like to see the houses? Um, and then there, from that was yet another robust discussion. Let's see what else. They also have their own housing subcommittee. And so I guess Judy is working on that one, and she. Talked, I I'm not, I can't remember what she was trying to do, but. She talked to someone who had moved here recently. And their suggestion was that on the website, it would have been interesting. To have not only an ethnic breakdown, but an age breakdown within the ethnic breakdown. So they could see, oh, well, maybe there's some other old people from my culture here. Who I could hang with, or maybe there's some young people from my culture. That was a a useful metric that they would um like to include. Okay, and she also said that Jeremy gave her the slides from the diversity training that the, I don't know if that was the staff diversity training. Or the council diversity training, or whether we all did the same one, did we?
There were different ones. I I provided the staff ones and I'm gonna um. I'll get a hold of them, provide the council one.
Okay, well, she was. Appreciative. And then the town seal project, which is one that they are very. Committed to. I think that is Kim and Lucy, and they've been working on this. Um, and they've been talking about, um, the skills of listening and dialogue and what kind of model do they want to do? They, do they want to do it as it was in at the picnic where they, uh, you know, brought people into the table and, and just had little conversations with them, or do they want to do it a different way? And I guess their next step, step is they're going to go to the town staff. And they asked us what groups in PV they should approach such as book clubs, the Sequoias, garden club, library committees, et cetera. Let's see what else. Um, one person who was at the meeting, not on the committee, but at the meeting, Rita, uh, is pursuing this Pioneer Days, which I think might be Colonial Days, but it's the same issue. She's had a really hard time getting a conversation with the school district about this. Um, and as you can imagine, the profile of life during that time, at least if it's the same as it was when my kids were at Ormondale, doesn't really take into account anybody but the white people. So that is a to be continued conversation. Oh, we also had another person at the meeting who is not on the committee named Adnan, and I cannot pronounce his last name, but he was, uh, very engaged in the meeting. Judy wanted to know if when we are in person, we could meet in the conference room. And it was pointed out that when we do get to meet in person again, it will likely be hybrid meeting and that will be set up in the schoolhouse. Then they're working on a year round calendar of events. They want to emphasize racial justice, not gender issues. And they talked about what they've got on the calendar thus far and how that could be integrated into the town, you know, whether Kerry could help. And then they did something that was, I thought was sort of interesting. They talked about, okay, what is the, what is? What is the mission of this committee? And they went around and talked about it. And that, a lot of people answered it by, this is why I got involved. So Johnny said, I was on the corner with the other folks. And what I'm interested in is the young, the fallen young black men. I'm interested in the race part of race inequity. Pat also came to the committee through the corner. She would like to see more diversity in Palo Alto. Portola Valley Cultural and Economic Diversity. Um, she's very interested in being inclusive and wants Portola Valley to be known as a safe area where you can come and be welcome. Judy talked about her background when she was young, working for Fair, Fair Housing Act. And how she really had her come to Jesus moment with the George Floyd murder. She also would like to see the town more diverse. It would make us a more robust community. Andrew has had a career as an attorney in civil rights employment. He's also worked on, uh, Human Right Relations Commission in Palo Alto and Santa Clara County. He says his family is two thirds black. So if there's a committee like this, he should sit on it. Paul would like to incorporate the schools. He's a student at the priory. He's also liked to have Portola Valley more inclusive and he is offering the younger point of view. Who, I can't even read that. Oh, Kim came to us through the corner. At first she thought this was kind of silly when she went to the corner. But once she started going out there, she had a complete change of mind. And after, and after the George Floyd murder, she I guess woke up and decided that she, um, it was her job to work on this sort of racial justice. She has an organizational development background. She's interested in dialogue and how we talk about these things and is still trying to figure it out. And Adnan, who was in the public in the audience, was born in Mauritius. Is that how you say it? Mauritius? And has lived in Pakistan, France and Vermont. He is an immigrant to the US. He's raising multicultural, multiracial children. And his interest is words, how words have power, how words, um, can I think it's how words have power and how through words we can ask ourselves what is belonging. He is interested in the concept of belonging and the opportunity to make people feel that they belong. And with that, I believe they concluded and it was a nice way to end the meeting. For the third time, I took part in the one day homeless count, which happens every two years, although it might have skipped a year because of COVID. And once again, I was deployed to Portola Valley. I reported at five in the morning at the library. Once again, I was paired up with Brian Greenberg, who works at Life Moves and ran Walden House in the city and is a psychologist and has worked a lot with, um, people with addiction issues as well as homeless. And he's just an incredible human. Um, and this time we also had two other people in our car because they didn't want to drive. They don't, didn't know the area and they didn't want to drive the hills. And actually one was a Chinese, uh, medical researcher at Stanford, who doesn't have a driver's license in this country. The other woman was a social worker from the county. We went through all the hills. You know, above Portola Valley and Woodside, we came to, I mean, we, we went all around the town. We looked in church parking lots. Then we went the west part of Menlo Park, like over by the shopping center there. Again, parking lots, churches, and did not find any homeless people this time. Let's see. And the, I did a lot of other meetings during the week before, but I did want to mention commute.org because it's the first time that a Portola Valley person has attended. And they made a really big deal about that. It was also the first time that, um, Menlo Park was attending. There was a presentation by Josh Becker about SB nine seventeen, which is a seamless bill. That is the bill where you could ride Caltrain or Bart or the bus system all with the same clipper card. It would all just transfer seamlessly between those different transportation platforms. And, oh, I, I, I think they, did they do a new chair? Well, the chair was Cliff Lance and the vice chair was Emily Beach. Maybe they weren't new. Maybe I just wrote that down for myself. Everybody in the county is on this board except for Woodside. Now that Menlo Park and Portola Valley have joined. Uh, there was a agenda item about teacher staff housing and transportation. There are a lot of cities right now that are working with the school districts on teacher and staff housing. Uh, most of the housing is located close to the schools in the Jefferson Union High School District. The housing project is, um, close, I think, to one school, but not close to the other two schools. And so one of the board members, Mike O'Neil, was interested if, um, commute.org could help provide some vans for about a hundred people who were going to five sites. And the, um, they talked about it. And they were supportive, but it's not sure that that, that short kind of run would be funded. So I guess they have to do a little more research. Let's see. What else did they talk about? And then they just talked about their work plans for the year. A lot of them, they did their shuttle program report. Uh, they, in their own office, they returned to the office in hybrid mode. Then they, then they had to go back home. You know, this whole COVID thing up and down. Right now they're all hybrid. Fifty percent are in the office, fifty percent. So everybody is fifty percent in the office and fifty percent at home. And, but everybody is together on Thursdays and they love that model. And we might be in person for the next meeting in April. And then there was a closed session about the compensation for the executive director. And I'm not going to go into the other ones, but I did attend a CCG meeting. I did attend an ASCC meeting where there wasn't a lot on the agenda. Otherwise I would report that. And there was a Resource Management Climate Protection Committee meeting that was just packed with stuff. Um, they're actually trying to get a draft residential laundry to landscape program going. Which I think would be great in Portola Valley. I think that's it. Okay. Sorry, sorry, person who texted me that that was a little too long.
Okay, who's next? John, go ahead.
Sure. Mine was pretty short. I was also at the Race and Equity Committee meeting last night and I think Mary Ann hit all the highlights. Um, I'm super impressed with the comment about belonging. I think that's a really significant way to look at the issues that a lot of people deal with. The other one I had was, um, emergency preparedness. Uh, not a lot of new interesting things on the agenda, um, some discussion about putting evacuation. Who study into the, um, onto the EPC, they were gonna, they were gonna talk about it. And I believe that is going to be something that will be coming to us before too long. And, um, the only, the real significant thing there was probably that there was a, uh, demonstration of the continued misunderstanding about the role of the liaison and committees and, um, it's something we have to sort of pay attention to. That's it.
Okay. Jeff.
Yeah, so, uh, the, the one meeting that I was in since our, since the last meeting was, was the Housing Element Committee meeting with Sarah. So you probably, I, I wasn't there, it was not our last meeting. So I'm assuming you got to update any four and a half hour meeting from the twenty second. I'll tell you a little bit about the six and a half hour meeting on the twenty eighth. Uh, but because it was six and a half hours, I'm not going to catch everything. I apologize in advance. So this was kind of the second half of the talk about the housing inventory, which was basically kind of a discussion of, of rezoning and specifically of upzoning. And as you no doubt realize, that some of you know, that was all of you, I'm sure know at this point, um, there was a very, um, there was a robust public reaction that ranged from sort of curiosity and confusion to, um, uh, consternation, even some hostility, I'd say. On the whole, I actually would say, I think it was a good discussion. You know, it's, it's people, you know, people needed to, we needed to hear people's voices on this. And, and I don't blame people for being kind of, um, upset and concerned about it. You know, after, you know, we got a lot of comments, um, the committee kind of, um, I think what ended up sort of happening is, is that the committee really wanted to step back and, and look at other options around this. And so we talked about some other ways, you know, what, what else we might be able to do. I'd say as sort of what alternatives to sort of, I think the thing that probably people took the most, um, the thing that probably a lot of people hesitated the most strongly over would have been sort of upzoning single family residential properties. Understandably so. It's, it's a very, it's a hard thing to contemplate. And I think the committee really sort of pulled back and was asking staff in particular to sort of see what other options we have and develop a few alternatives to that. You know, she, just what, what we could do to either sort of mitigate that or, or eliminate it. That was sort of, I mean, so again, the discussion really centered around this question of all the various, the various options for rezoning, uh, which have to be done soon, uh, in order to, um, to, to get through sequel and, uh, see the sequel analysis in time to submit this to, to the state. And we're going to be talking on the twenty third about this process and sort of some of the what came out of this meeting, we'll, we'll come up again on the twenty third, but, um, again, obviously the, the, the public comment on this was, was, um, was strong, was, it was very, was very, very, in some cases, strident. You know, I think the committee on the whole, I think they handled it pretty well. Uh, it was, it was, like, you know, it was a tough topic. I think I mean, committee members were also uncomfortable with it, but, um, you know, hopefully that we've, we've managed to sort of move forward. Make sure that we exhaust all of our options, um, in terms of building the site inventory and in a way that hopefully doesn't get us too far off track in terms of the overall process. Uh, Sarah, feel free to add or embellish on that or, or correct if, as needed.
Yeah, I think the thing, I, I mean, I, the, the, to me, the summary of it was really, how do we assure that we're exhausting all of our options? So we have a baseline option that was reviewed and discussed, and I'm sure aspects of it, um, you know, because we have, we have to get to these one hundred and fifty units. Um, and so that's already out there. And I think it's exactly what, um, Jeff said is how do we exhaust the, the other options? I think the only two kinds of things I would, would add in addition to, to what Jeff said is, you know, the, an interest in figuring out ways of having, um, more dispersment um, versus just in those three areas that were, were kind of on, on that, that map. Um, and then also, you know, I think there was strong and consistent support for, um, maintaining our existing, you know, doing what we maintaining our existing, um, commercial, uh, businesses. Both, both to have these local businesses and to have, um, local jobs. Um, and so I think there was consistent and strong, strong support for that. So yeah, I don't think I have, have much, much to add beyond that. And, um, I think there's, there, I thought another aspect of the meeting that was good is I think we, I personally feel like we, we made a lot of progress in terms of educating more people about the complexities of this very difficult situation. And the fact that we absolutely have to meet this. Um, and we just need to find the right way to do it for our community. So I think we did make progress in terms of building awareness and educating people on, on those complexities. That's kind of it.
Jeff, did you have anything else?
That was, no, that was the, that was the main thing I, the main meeting I had to report on.
Okay, Sarah, anything else?
I had, do you want me to go on to my other liaison meetings, you mean?
It's your turn. Yep.
Okay, yeah. Um, today we had a PVSD update. They wanted to make sure people were aware that they're offering tours of the, uh, new construction on the twenty third. The one for Ormondale is at one thirty and the one for Cortomadera is at three o'clock on that same day, March twenty third. There's, she, uh, um, they indicated that, um, you know, the, the Ormondale project is on a timeline for opening in September and the Cortomadera one in November. Also discussed their staffing needs. It seems to be a common, um, theme and, and a lot of different disciplines. Their staffing needs are particular, they have particular shortness in, um, paraeducators and substitute teachers. Um, and then they also indicated that they had been working with our evacuation subcommittee group. And, um, it sounds like there was also a good meeting just recently between PVSD Priory Windmill with, uh, Department of Emergency Management. So, um, some good collaboration going on there. Uh, the other meeting I had was on, um, March first. It was the WPC meeting. Um, again, a good update from the evacuation subcommittee, um, kind of refining or, uh, updating the group about the three scenarios. And what I, one big takeaway for me was the timeline is looking, um, like June for completion of that. Um, and if people have, um, input, uh, just a reminder, uh, that, uh, we have a, a, a specific email address set up on the website. For that, you can find it within, on the WPC page and the subcommittee members are, um, managing that community input. Uh, the next thing was a safety element. Uh, Jeremy attended and gave the group, uh, a, a, a status update on uh, how the safety element is coming together, um, and what the process will be going forward. Um, the third item was goals and The third item was goals and priorities for twenty twenty two, which fell into the buckets of vegetation management, home hardening, evacuation, and finance and insurance. And then the, the fourth item was an update to the charter and I, we, we don't have that on the agenda for this meeting, so I'm assuming it's going to be perhaps on the next one because they do have updates that pass to their charter, which refocuses that Committee on mitigation, insurance, and financing. Risk mitigation is kind of the, the priority expressed in that charter. And then as John mentioned, there was discussion about subcommittee restructuring, the potential of evacuation, either moving to EPC or to a different framework while they're finishing up the evacuation plan. But again, it sounds like that's more discussions required on that. And as John said, I expect it will come at, either in the next meeting or soon after to our council. So that's it.
Yeah, thanks. I had two BPTS failed to get a quorum for the second consecutive meeting, so that was canceled. And then the other one was Parks and Rec, which I wasn't able to attend, but some follow up after that. Apparently, there've been some pretty major issues with, I think it's Alpine strikers and parking in the Zots parking lot for using Rosati field. And it's been echoed now. I've been getting emails throughout the week from various other folks. There seems to be a pretty substantial problem with field users being able to use the parking at Zots to be able to use the fields. So that's gonna need some following up, and it should be coming back to, BPTS has been looking at this for a while now. And Parks and Rec is now working on it as well. Jeremy, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, through the chair. If, if, if it's okay, I wanted to just
provide.
Oh, okay. On that topic, to provide a little color to the council, the, as you know, the success of Alpine and Zots was a great thing for our community. It also is contributing to parking challenges at, at Zots, particularly at times when users of the field wish to, to come down. The, a lot of conversation between the town, field users, and Alpine Inn to try to come up with systems that work, including Alpine Inn, spending some money to have folks out there to help direct traffic. I know that the Strikers had started to do that recent, that last go around as well. And expect further conversations at the staff level, committee level, and the like. The, there is not an easy solution to the problem because anything we do with parking is going to get pushed out into the streets one way or another, even if it's a few spaces. I found all the parties could be agreeable to continued conversations, which is really important with something that can become contentious very quickly. So I'm, I'm having a conversation with Alpine Strikers on Friday to learn a little bit more about what, what's happened. My last conversation with, with the league just about a month ago did not indicate that there were new problems. So you know, it was sort of news to staff as well. So we're gonna see how we can help to contribute to that and look forward to the committee's participation in that. Okay, to continue with my remainder of my report?
I see a hand up, so I'll take public comment on item eight before we move on to Town Manager Report. David, go ahead.
Sure. I, I think an important part of our community is the businesses that we frequent. And in the decades we've lived here, we've lost our drugstore, we've lost our post office, we've lost any number of other businesses. So in terms of the housing element, I know that we have a very tough situation and we're between rock and a hard place. But I would really hope we do everything we can to keep the town a place we can really call a town and not just a bedroom community and maintain as many of those businesses as we can. And I want to make sure that, that we do what we can to, to keep that going. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Is there any other public comment on item eight? Nope, I don't see any. Jeremy, over to you. Item nine.
Thank you. The most important item that I wanted to share with the council tonight is that we had an upcoming special meeting of the council for March twenty fourth. Just a community update on the wildfire issues. And a lot of planning and effort has gone into that as it's about two weeks out. Unfortunately, we are going to need to postpone it. Both of the representatives of the Woodside Fire Protection District are now unable to participate in the meeting at that date. So we will be working with them and staff to, to find it, an appropriate date in the very near future for that, for that meeting. We apologize that this has happened. We were very much looking forward to hearing from the community. But it seemed to make sense to us that you can't really have a meeting about fire. Woodside fires unable to attend. So makes sense to push things off at least a little bit. We had a burglary over the weekend at the Sequoias in one of the unoccupied apartments. Someone broke in and stole some tools. Hope people saw the newsletter today. There was also an incident that occurred at in, in Lidera. Let me pull up that information. Sorry, it didn't happen quite in front of me. Related to a pretty brazen purse snatching in the parking lot. So I know that the sheriff's office is going to gather some more information for that out, but I, I do believe that I saw it a little earlier tonight, posted on the forum. So I just wanted to mention that I, I was made aware of it this morning. And, you know, hopefully it's, it's an isolated incident. But had a few things happen in the last, the last few days. The town organized on behalf of the Department of Emergency Management at the county meeting with both the priory Portola Valley School District and Windmill School to talk about their evacuation planning efforts. It was a very productive meeting that I think Sarah mentioned a little bit about it earlier. Really appreciate the thought and attention from our partners in the community to provide information to DEM and help them get ready for any potential emergency. In particular, the conversation is around issues about making sure parents know what the plan is. In an emergency, you can imagine, take a wildfire emergency, if we are evacuating the community, but the schools are open and there's students there. Parents are going to want to go pick their kids up. So each of the different entities has a little different approach, but making sure that that's out in the community is, is really important. Department of Emergency Management can certainly help us as it relates to providing buses, vehicles, et cetera. So we're just trying to make this a little more robust than, than it is right now. I attended earlier this week a committee meeting of the Mid Peninsula Region Open Space Board on the Hawthorne Project. Nothing new to report out of it. They have a couple of committees that are looking at it, and it was really just a status update from staff to that particular committee. So no new information. But I spoke at it and expressed my thanks for the continued staff to staff interactions. They've been very great about letting us know what's happening. And iterated a few of, I think, the high level points that we would have some concerns about, particularly around the parking issues, connectivity issues on the trails and the like. So I'm taking that advantage every time I can to repeat a message that I think we're all very familiar with right now. I had a very nice conversation with representatives of the Housing and Community Development Department at the state around, primarily around a new entity that they have around post disaster recovery. It's a, as I said, it's a new group and they're thinking about how they can interact with cities that have kinds of issues that we do around wildfire and other types of issues. I'm hopeful that they will be able to come out to a future public meeting and present some of the work that they're doing, particularly to council. Or there, had a good meeting with Senator Becker's staff today to talk primarily about the ongoing issues about recovering vehicle license fee funds. The town council and staff have provided letters to a number of state elected officials around this issue. Unfortunately, what we thought was a solution to the issue appears to have been a little bit rewritten in the budget language that is going through both, both committees right now. And I appreciate Senator Becker following up, his office following up to see what they can do to help mitigate this. For us, right now, it looks like what the, the state is suggesting is that VLF monies get backfilled with existing ERAF monies. I'm using a lot of acronyms. It's a very complicated subject and I'll spend twenty minutes on it and bore everybody, but that doesn't work because it's paying, it's Robin Peter to pay Paul. The town has about $200,000 wrapped up in ERAF funds and something a little bit less in VLF triple flip monies. That would, that's a position. So it would be a real, real impact to all the cities in San Mateo County, including the town. And with that, that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Any public comment on item nine? Nope, seeing none. I will go to the digest, February twenty fourth. No. March third. No. Okay, any public comments on either digest items ten, eleven? No, okay, then we're ready to adjourn to closed session. We're going to have a brief closed session to discuss the Town Manager's annual performance review. So thank you to those members of the public who've stuck with it this far. We're gonna say goodbye to you now and start locking things down.
Good night, you all.
Good night.
Take care, mother.
Um, let's see, what do I need to do here? I guess, Sharon, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, um, do I need to do anything? Are you gonna?
I'm gonna lock.
You're gonna lock it? Okay. And then I'm already.
It's locked in your co-host.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, we're still recording though. I need to stop recording, I guess.
Yes.
Stop recording.